Welcome, everybody, back to another episode of Sweet Home Catoosa. And this is Richard Tharp, and I am here to do Commissioner Talk again. I'm sorry for the brief absence here. My beautiful wife here had some surgery, and so we were taking care of her. And trust me, this isn't possible without her back there handling the cameras and audio and all that. So we're thankful she went through surgery. Everything went well. We're back up and running, and here we go. So today, I'm going to cover two meetings. I'm going to cover our January 27th meeting, and then I'm going to also cover our February the 4th meeting. I don't think this will be any longer than the last episode. There's a couple of topics, obviously, in each meeting that are going to be things you, the viewers, are going to want to know. Obviously, in this first meeting here is our bond with CHI Memorial. I know a lot of people are going to be watching and wanted me to get to that as soon as I can, and I'll get to that here in a minute. And then in our February the 4th meeting, probably the biggest thing in that meeting you'll hear about is our board appointment. So we'll get to that as well. So we'll dive right in. So, you know, everything was pretty cut and dry up front, but I will say this meeting on February 27th, we started the meeting off with an amazing thing for our community and for our family. They got the help they needed in time that they needed it. And so first, we start off the meeting with oath of office. So we had some new firefighters come on board here with Catoosa County. And it's always a great thing to see young men and women that want to be active in our community and want to serve. And so how lucky were we that we had a couple firefighters that wanted to come on with Catoosa County? We were lucky enough to have them come aboard. And so we, the chairman, Stephen Hendry swore them in and gave them their oath of office. And then we also had some promotions, which is always great, folks that have been serving our communities for years. And so we had Jeremy Rominger. He got promoted up to lieutenant. And so we were happy for Jeremy and his promotion. And Brett Cripps got promoted up to captain. And then we also had Captain Dave Petty got promoted up to deputy fire marshal. So those were some great things that happened. But here was the touching moment that really had everybody in tears at the meeting. And if you were there watching, you know exactly what I mean. So I'm going to read you this call. We had a gentleman, Chad Harris, who was a cardiac arrest survivor, who wanted to thank the Catoosa County Fire Department. So on December 31st, a call came into Catoosa County Emergency 911 that Chad had fell unconscious at work. Firefighters with Engine Company One arrived and began immediate life-saving care before Chad went by ambulance to CHI Memorial Hospital, where the medical staff shocked him at least 17 times. And a CT scan showed no brain activity due to the lack of oxygen from the cardiac arrest event. Chad remained in ICU for an additional medical care and eventually opened his eyes and regained consciousness many days later. Miraculously, Chad has no apparent long-term damage other than some short-term memory loss and was proud to bring a big smile and thank you to his heroes. So Chad, his sister Kristy, wanted to come in and thank Sergeant Josh White, Sergeant Ronnie Crawford, and firefighter Brock Hammond Tree for their excellent work and life-saving skills. That's what it's all about. You know, we talk about where our tax dollars go and things that go on. But listen, Mr. Harris can tell you, those fine young men saved his life. There's not a doubt in my mind. So there wasn't a dry eye in the house. And we're so thankful for Chad and his miraculous recovery. And we're really thankful for our fellow 911 folks that took the call and for our firefighters that went and performed those life-saving emergency skills on him and 911 and everybody involved saved his life. So that was a great moment in the meeting. And then we moved along to some fiscal matters. And these are the things in the meetings that kind of go pretty quick. We had to reapprove the public defender contract, proposed approval of the VOCA grant. And that basically allows us to serve the folks in the Lookout Mountain Judicial Circuit, excuse me, and, you know, it allows us to continue with them. Proposed approval, a resolution of equipment surplus. So we had some equipment surplus in the district attorney's office, and the proposal was brought forward that, hey, they don't need those items anymore. And one of the commissioners, I think it was Commissioner Long, said, hey, listen, the best way to dispose of those surplus items is let's put that on GovBids, and that way, everybody's got access to them. And, you know, it gets done in an open forum where, you know, it's pretty transparent in the way those things were disposed of. So that was a great thing and a great suggestion by Commissioner Long. The next item up there was proposal of an emergency repair on the courthouse elevator. So went out and got three quotes. Otis Elevator, who's done a lot of work in our elevators in our county, but they came in at $94,552. They were actually the high bid. The next bid was TK Elevator at $74,598. And the last bid was A B E C Elevator at $59,980. And so with that being the low bid, I had some questions because I wanted to make sure that, you know, there's always change orders when you do things like this. And what happened at the elevator at courthouse? The hydraulics that lower and raise the elevator had just, they're just wore out. And so they said, hey, we'll come in there and replace those hydraulic cylinders. But we just wanted to make you aware, when we take those old cylinders out, the holes that they're in essentially, they could crumble. And, you know, if that happens, we'll have to reboard new holes and all that. And that would be what we call a change order in addition to the quote and above and beyond. And so my question was, have we ever done business with A B E C, our low bid here? And the answer to that was no. So of course, my first thought is, is, you know, are they low bidding? And then you have the risk of the change orders come in. And by the time it's all said and done, we're right where we were maybe with the high bid. So our county manager did some wonderful due diligence and called around. And this company, you know, typically what happens when you get a big company like Otis, folks go and they work for Otis, and they get a lot of great training through the years. But then over time, some of those folks stop working for those large companies, and they go off on their own. But they still had the same skills that they learned or that Otis would have used if they worked for Otis and come in. So that happened to be a situation here where that company years back folded off on their own. And they have done a lot of work in the area. And so we got glowing reviews from everybody they had done work for. And so it was a great savings to the citizens to be able to cut the bid down that much. I mean, you went from 94 to $59,000. Now, the scope of that work, it takes about 10 weeks. So it was a huge win for the county, in my opinion. But I needed to do a little due diligence on my part as well to make sure it wasn't a bait and switch kind of situation, which it wasn't. Then we had a Five Star Vending, wanted to put a vending machine at the 911 office. Obviously, when you're working at 911, you can't just take off and go run down the road. And so they wanted to be able to offer our employees in the 911 center a machine that would have different foods, drinks, things like that in there. And so that was a great add-on for the county and for 911. And Steve Quinn got up and presented that. And one thing I will say about Five Star, they're a great company in the fact that they'll actually put healthy choices in the machines and charge less. So what they want to encourage employees to do is eat healthy. So to do that, one of the ways they do it is they put those offerings in the machines at a lower reduced price. So, you know, gives a healthy option for employees there, and it's actually more economical. So I thought that was great as well. Then we had, you know, basically, you've got Sentinel One. Scott with our IT department came in. So basically, this is our cybersecurity, yeah, in a nutshell, you know, for all the county computers and everything. So he came in and presented and said, here's our best option, and that's what we went with. And then the next one, the same thing, Google email addresses, you know, everybody counting emails. So pretty standard type things there. Mobile communications, courthouse, basically, 911 was in the courthouse. And it has been relocated in the College and Career Academy back there. So it's basically the last step of getting all the equipment moved out of there and moved over to the new 911. So we also had some ballistic vests for the county fire department. So Chief Walston stood up and presented some quotes for ballistic vests. You know, and one of the things that's just shocking, you think about it, it's like, well, why does the fire department need basically bulletproof vests? And unfortunately, there's going to be times where they may be first on the scene in a situation where they need those. And last thing we want is to put our firefighters in harm's way without the proper equipment to protect themselves. So unfortunately, in the world we live in today, and we see it on the TV every day, and that's just something that, you know, we've got to have in our department. So that was an approval we gave for the chief. And then we had the Explorer program in the fire department. And basically, what chief was coming on this one to say is, hey, we've got an event coming up. We've got one in Pigeon Forge, and we've got another one down in Alabama that we take our Explorer program. And the Explorer program are youth that want to get active and potentially become firefighters. And this is a way like Boy Scouts or anything else for them to kind of get involved. And what they do when they go to these Explorer programs, they have events there, you know, and so it gets them where they can hone their skills and become future firefighters for us in Catoosa County. But one of the things, he didn't need approval from the board, but he wanted to know that, hey, we're going to this because there will be Catoosa County Fire Department vehicles in Pigeon Forge or down in Alabama when this second event happens. And for nothing do we want a citizen to be up at Pigeon Forge and say, well, why do we have county vehicles all the way up here? So he just liked to be transparent as well, and we appreciated that. Which leads us to what a lot of folks have been waiting to get to, and that's the CHI Memorial bond. So there's been a lot talked about online about the bonds and a lot of things that get misunderstood. And so one of the things when I came on, this was coming up, and I wanted to know first, that was the biggest thing we all wanted to know, is, is the county on the hook for any of this, for these bonds? So CHI, back in December of '21, actually, when this resolution was adopted, 16th day is December 2021, it was a resolution between the Board of Commissioners in Catoosa County approving Mandarin memorandum of understanding and connection with the replacement of CHI Memorial Hospital in Georgia. So we all know the old Hutcheson down there in Fort Oglethorpe. And CHI wanted to come in, and they wanted to build a brand-new hospital. Well, there was a lot of moving pieces that went with that. First thing, and Chad Young, our county attorney, laid that out as, one of the things that, like with the bond, that had to happen is for the hospital to be where it is today, it was actually a half mile outside of the scope of where the old hospital used to be. So you had to basically go and get permissions, or if you want to call it, a lot of different things. But we had to go, and the bond offering was one of the things that kind of got them to do that, where we could take and move the hospital that extra half mile. So they came and they want to do up to $40 million bond. And that's where things kind of get into it. So the first question I have is, was the county on the hook? So I'm going to read from this, and this lays it all out. This was read at the meeting, and for those who attended or watched online, this is kind of not new to you, but folks that haven't. So like me, we're not going to be on the hook, right? So the bond shall not constitute a debt or pledge of faith and credit of the state of Georgia, the county, or any other political, little tongue-tied today, folks, sorry about this, subdivision of the state of Georgia. And issuance of the bonds shall not directly, indirectly, or contingently obligate the state of Georgia or any political subdivision thereof, including specifically the county, to levy or pledge any form of taxation, whether or to make any appropriation for bond payments. So CHI Memorial said, look, we're going to do a bond, and we're going to do up to 40 million. And so how this bond works is, they put it out there. Folks want to buy the bonds, they buy the bonds, and CHI takes that money. And the CHI pledged over a 30-year period, kind of like if you bought a house and you borrowed money on your house and you pay monthly payments for 30 years. That's what CHI Memorial is doing. They pay back into the Economic Development Authority here in Catoosa County, those payments, and those payments to the Economic Development Authority go straight back to paying the bond. So obviously, they pay a rate of interest. And on the schedule that I got is about 1.9%. So it's not real high, but they do pay interest, and that's how the people that buy the bonds make money. They park their money there by purchasing the bonds, and they get a rate of return back. So no holders of the bond shall ever have the right to compel the exercise of any taxing power of the county to pay the bonds or any interest thereof. So that was always the first question. You know, taxpayer citizens are like, are we paying this? No. Are they borrowing money from Catoosa County? Absolutely not. So Catoosa County has not one penny invested. They're not doing anything with the bonds, and they're not on the hook for the bonds. So that was the first big question out there with these bonds. Now, this 40 million represents roughly 25%, 30% of the total cost to build the hospital down there. So it's not the whole cost, it's a portion of the cost that they're doing. Well, that led us to the next thing, and that's been what's here recently. So audits. So when you do bonds, there is an audit provision in there. And through the state of Georgia, and a lot of folks will be listening to this, and they'll say, if you have a bond offering up to $5 million, there is no audit provision in a bond offering. If you go over that, then there is an audit provision unless you opt out of the audit provision. So that's where things kind of get folks online right now talking about. So let's talk about that real quick for a second. Why would you want an audit provision in there? And what is the audit provision? So to give you an example, folks, on why an audit provision was important, years back, Shaw Industries here locally wanted to do an expansion. And to do that expansion, they wanted to do a bond offering as well. And so when you do that, they actually came forward and said, listen, with this bond offering, we want to have a promise of this many jobs, and we're going to bring in this much equipment. And the equipment, of course, is taxable, so it's revenue to the county and the city of Ringgold. So they had provisions in there to get this bond offering out there. So there had to be an audit provision put into that bond offering because we wanted to have the ability to go back and say, did you provide the jobs you stated you were going to provide? And did you bring in the equipment you stated you were going to bring in? And then without an audit provision, we couldn't have gone back and done that. So flash forward now to this $40 million bond offering with CHI Memorial. Well, CHI Memorial didn't pledge any certain amount of jobs, although we know there'll be jobs created. They didn't pledge any jobs like Shaw had, and they didn't pledge on how much equipment was going to be brought in. And obviously, we know with a brand-new hospital, there'd be plenty of equipment brought in. So without things put in there, there was no really need. There is no need for an audit provision because CHI is going out and getting this money, and they're repaying it back. And so the county didn't need an audit provision because the county is not loaning them any money. We're not loaning them one penny of it. So CHI didn't pledge the jobs, and they didn't pledge the equipment as far as dollar amounts in there. So the auditing just didn't need to happen that way. You know, CHI is borrowing the money, and then they're turning around, paying monthly payments to make good. So listen, to give you an example, if you bought a house, you go and you want to buy a house or a car, we can use two examples, so everybody kind of has a way to relate to this. You go and you find that car or you find that house, and there's a certain amount of money involved, and you borrow that money, and a bank comes and they loan you that money. They don't have an audit provision either, right? You know, like with a house or a car, a car, you could say, they're not coming back around and saying, we noticed you don't change the oil regularly. We notice you're not doing the maintenance that's required to keep the vehicle in good shape. They don't do that, right? There's a good faith there that they can loan you the money based off of your creditworthiness, and that you're going to pay that back, and how they make their money is off the interest. Same thing with a home. They don't come and say, hey, we noticed you're not cleaning out the gutters or the leaves in the valley or your air filter inside, and that's putting stress on your air conditioning system. So some people will say, but there's a whole big difference between a house and a car in $40 million hospital. Well, there is and there isn't. Because CHI is creditworthy as well, just like you are when you buy a car or a house, and they're paying that money back plus interest, just like we all do when we borrow money on a car or a house. So there is no audit provision in any of our contracts, and it's the same way with CHI Memorial. There are times where you have an audit provision. If they had a promise, we were going to put 50 jobs within this community, absolutely, there'd be an audit provision because we would want that. We would want to make sure that we could hold their feet to the fire to do that. We know it'll create jobs. And look, one of the things that that hospital is doing inside of our community is, a lot of you folks have already seen, Longhorn Steakhouse is going to open right up at the next corner there. It's going to bring in growth in that area with the hospital because all the employees that'll be there, all the people that'll come to the hospital as well. And I had a citizen the other day that said, I don't think we needed the hospital. I don't think there's a need there. I just assumed they had not have put that there. And I said, you know, that is your prerogative. And I said, you know, you could think about it just like this. If you love a buffet, you go down to Golden Corral in Fort Oglethorpe, and you eat with the hundreds and hundreds every day of other folks that do. But if you don't like a buffet, you just don't eat there. You drive by and you just go on about your business. Well, that's the way the hospital is. If you never have a need, bless you. I'm glad you never have a need for that hospital. But for the folks inside of our community that need that health care in a convenient place, they're going to be thankful for it. So I hope everybody doesn't need that. But for the folks that do, I'm glad that CHI pledged to come in and do it. And this bond offering is a way for them to do it because they had to get a certificate of need to be able to move that hospital, that extra half mile there. And this bond process was part of that, getting of that certificate of need. So the last thing that happened is, is the public notices went out in the paper. And, you know, in bold, it says, the authority will not conduct any performance or audit or performance review with respect to the series of 2025 bonds as such terms are described in section, and this is where it got out of hand a little bit, 36-28-100. Well, the 28 in the middle should have been an 82 of official code of Georgia and noted. So there was two numbers that got turned backwards in that. And so some citizens said, hey, we should just stop, go over, and go through the whole process again. But in bold describes what that code is. In bold, it says, the reason for that code is for no audits. So it was plainly stated, and there's just no need for an audit. Listen, if I thought there needed to be an audit provision in there because they had made pledges and responsibilities that they were going to do something, I'd be more than one raising my hand saying, no, we need to keep this in. But they're pledging this hospital, and anybody drives by and sees the hospital is coming. So we can agree to disagree with some folks saying, no, there should have been an audit provision. But they're not borrowing the money from the county. They're not borrowing it from you, the taxpayers. We're not on the hook for any of it. If CHI Memorial doesn't make it, like Hutcheson didn't, and everybody wants to go back to that hospital and say, hey, they didn't make it, and we had problems there, well, we're not on the hook for that. If they don't, people that took those bonds out, just like you, the bank that took the note out and gave you the money for that car. If you blow that car up, and they get the car back, and it's not worth what's left on that note, they understand they took that risk. And the people buying the bonds are taking that risk. There's a risk there that they may not get paid back. But if you look at CHI Memorial and their parent company and the billions of dollars of business they do annually and the net worth of the company, the people that were going to offer up the bonds said, you know, we feel like you're definitely a solid company. And they are. They've been in our community for years inside of Chattanooga. So I know, like I said, not everybody's going to agree with that. But for me, as a commissioner, I would never have voted if we, the county, were on the hook or obligated with any of this with CHI Memorial, and we're not. So I know that doesn't put it to bed, but that's my two cents on it, and that's the way I looked at it. I don't think it needed an audit provision, and I don't think there's anything nefarious that's going to go on with $40 million if CHI borrows it and they don't use it the appropriate way. I mean, look, if you look at the company and their track record, and I have online, and I try to do my homework, they're a solid company. You know, this is only a quarter of what they're needing to build that hospital. So it's not like they built it for less, and they're taking some money and going down the road and doing something different with it. They're putting it, investing it in our community, and I'm thankful for that. So that was pretty much it for that meeting. So we'll jump on now to February 4th meeting. And here again, it just kind of came right through. The first matter that we had to vote on, administrative fiscal matters, was the Office of the Lookout Mountain Judicial Circuit has two vehicles. The state gave them, a Ford Edge and Ford Explorer. And they wanted to have us, Catoosa County, put them over to where we take care of the maintenance on the vehicles. And so you'd say, well, why would we want to do that? Well, because if, they have to have a place to go and get maintenance on their vehicles. And then since we already do maintenance of vehicles, it was just a logical solution for them. And if they do need maintenance on their vehicles, the state reimburses the county for anything. So it doesn't cost the county anything at all. It was just a way for them to be able to put the vehicles and have a place for them to get maintenance done on them, and the state reimburses the county. So it's a wash. So it was a no-brainer for me. The next one was a security system monitoring at Catoosa Hall. It was an agreement, this $396 a year to provide security on the building. Here again, easy one, nothing big. And then that brought us to our financial report from our CFO, Rachel Clark. So in the nutshell on that, our revenues for November were basically $3.5 million, and our expenses were 3.1. The number's a little different, but just for the sake of time. So we were a little over $400,000 to the good, more revenue than expenses. So here again, just shows the health of the county as a whole. We've got six months put aside. If we had a catastrophic event or anything where we needed to jump out there and start taking care of things, like the torn attic event that happened in Ringgold, you know, FEMA came in, and they would reimburse for a lot of things once it's declared an emergency, and the state of Georgia will too. But in the meantime, citizens need to be able to have the action from us, the county, to come in and do these things. So having money set aside, for instances like that, where we can front-load the money, get the relief to our citizens, and then worry about collecting the money later, it's good to have that where we can continue on as a county government and help the citizens out. So financial status of the county was great. The next one was our landfill. So we really don't have a landfill anymore. And I know that that's come up with the lawsuit going on now and all that because we used to have a landfill way back when. It's a transfer station now. So anything you take down there to what folks commonly call the landfill, it's collected there, and BFI, Republic Services, transfers that garbage out of the county. It may go to Cleveland or Hamilton County or wherever. They have a place, and it all goes. So nothing goes inside of our landfill anymore. But the contract was up. And so it's a huge win for the county and for the citizens because the renegotiation of the contract is actually cheaper rates than what we had currently paid up until February the 2nd, which is where this contract went into effect. So now, if you use the transfer station and you take garbage down there, you're paying less today than you did last year. And I think it's a huge win for us. There were some other huge wins in there as well. And some of the things, just for the citizens to know, there are things you could take over there to the transfer station that are free. They don't cost you anything. And that's plastic, cardboard, aluminum, scrap metal, batteries, used motor oil. If you're like me, I change the oil on two or three of my own vehicles. But I end up with the used oil, and I've always been like, well, I wonder where I need to take this. Well, you could take it there for free. That's great, antifreeze as well. But the big thing that we got added, two things, actually. First thing is, there's always been folks going down there saying, man, the card readers go down, and they have no way to take money, and they won't take cash, and they won't take a check. So what we got them to do, and thankfully, Republic agreed to do this, is, one, they've got a card reader there, but two, they've got a backup. So if one goes down, they have a backup. And then in the redundancy that the first one and second one fail, then they will accept cash or check if the cards are down. So we wanted to make sure that it wasn't an inconvenience where you drive all the way over there and you find out that they can't take your money. So we tried to put things in place to where that won't happen anymore for you. And then also, twice a year, once in the spring and the fall, Catoosa County residents only, so you have to present your driver's license, could take up to three bulk items free of charge to the landfill. So let's say on those, you've got an old dresser or a couch or an old table, something of that nature, and you just don't have a way to get rid of it because you can't go put it out there beside the road, let's say. Well, you can take it to the landfill, and they'll announce these events twice a year, three bulk items for free. So I thought that was really gracious of them to be able to add something to it. You know, and a simple thing, because we had two bids, like bag goods. You know, we all use bags. So it's a dollar a bag is what it is now. But the other bid came in and said, well, it's a dollar for 30 gallon or less. But the other bid came in and said, well, it's a dollar for 30 gallon or less, $2 for 50 gallon or less and $4 if it's greater than a 50 gallon bag. So the bids really, it just, there wasn't, they weren't even close. And they have now the ability for you, if you use it, you're paying less than you did last year. So there's a lot of savings to folks in the community. So I was real thankful for that as well. So some good things there. So then that brought us to our next topic that went out there, which are board appointments. So one of the things, if, if you folks watched me during my campaign and listened to me, one of the things I said, because I was a part of this, is I didn't feel like the way we were handling board appointments was the way I, I thought there was room for improvement. I had applied for a board appointment years ago and I had saw it come up and like a lot of you, I sent my resume in, just like it asked me to do. But I never got contacted. I never got contacted for an interview. I got, never got contacted saying, hey, we picked somebody else. Thank you for applying. I just never got any kind of correspondence and that always bothered me. So I said, we could do better. And so thankfully as a board, we all got together and I kind of expressed some things and we all said, yeah, I think there's room for improvement. So we all agreed that we would interview all applicants that applied for the board appointments. And so Chuck Harris and I, and thankful for Chuck for doing it with me, sat down and spent a whole Friday, it was over eight hours interviewing all the applicants to the boards. And we had three boards that had appointments that had come up. And we had the Economic Development Authority that had four vacancies. We had the Board of Assessors with two vacancies and the Planning Commission with two vacancies. So we'll start with the Planning Commission, that was up first. So we had a total of seven applicants and we had two vacancies. The two vacancies were actually Jeff Fava and Wanda Garrett and they both were reapplied. And at the end of the day, as a board, and I'll speak for myself, I think Wanda, and I had never met either one of these until just about a week ago, and shook both their hands, introduced myself. But I have attended planning and zoning meetings through the years and I've watched that board. And I've always said it and you know, it's no secret. I've always said Wanda to me was the, my favorite on the board and I apologize to the other board members. But the reason I like Wanda is Wanda lives on an agricultural piece of land. She doesn't build homes for a living. She's not a developer. She's just your average citizen, like everybody watching for the most part. And so, you know, whenever she gets a case and she talks or asks questions, it was just always coming from the right place in my opinion. And I think that's welcomed on a board when you can have a citizen that really, you know, folks say, oh, well, they've got something maybe because they do build homes or they do develop and there's other interests there. You know, Wanda was just as straight up as they could get that way. And then Jeff Fava has been on there a while too. And that board just works well together in my opinion. And so I, I personally and the rest of the board, I guess, followed along and, and shared, at least three of us shared the same sentiment. And so Jeff and Wanda were put back on for another four year term. So then that brought us to the Board of Assessors. So we had two gentlemen, Tony Henson and James Clark, that were coming off of the assessors board and they didn't reapply. So we had two brand new openings to do on the Board of Assessors. Now I think we can all agree, the Board of Assessors is a very important board. Anybody that's gotten their tax bill the last two years understands how assessments affect taxes. So, you know, I took it very important and I wanted to find two people that would go on that assessors board, that one could devote the time. There's a lot of classroom courses that you have to complete to be on the assessors board. You have to complete 40 hours of training your first year and then you've got 20 for the next two years. So in the first three years you're on that board, you've got to complete 80 hours of training to be on the assessors board. So it's a very important position. There's a lot of training that comes with it. So I wanted to make sure we put citizens on there, one, that could dedicate the time to the training and two, that I felt were the right folks to go on that board. And the two choices that ended up being put on that board were Dean Orum and Braden Moreland. I had never met either one of these two gentlemen before the interviews. And here again, that's why the interviews are important in my opinion, because people can come in and sit down and you know, a piece of paper only tells you so much. But when you could talk to them and you could find out their history and their, how long they've been in the county and you know, why did they want to apply for this? You really find out that, you know, the true person behind the piece of paper, so to speak. Dean retired from Shaw. So he's lived in the county for a long time, retired from Shaw and logistics. And so he was really, real sharp on a lot of the things that I thought it would take to be a very good person on the assessors board, somebody can make some good decisions, sound judgment because of how important it is. And then Braden Moreland's the same way. So Braden is a retired school teacher and he's been in the county his whole life as well. And Braden talked about when Dollar General was trying to come over there off a three notch road by Heritage Middle and High School on the corner there. There were some citizens that he knew and there were some things going on Braden didn't agree with. And so Braden got involved and went down there and ended up, the Dollar General didn't come to that piece of property and Braden kind of stood up for the citizen. And I think that citizen involvement and that's, you know, goes to speak about the passion you have for your community. There's a lot of folks that show up to commission meetings or Board of Education meetings or other meetings because there's some things going on they don't agree with. And I think that's great that we have people that'll stand up and speak out. But you know, with his educational background, his history here in the county, and he's got a lot of different things that, you know, he believes strongly in. I thought he would be great to the board as well and those were the two picks on that board. The last board, Economic Development Authority. So we had four vacancies. We had our chairman, Rick Partain, Vice Chair, Mike Sadesky, Jim Cutler and Paul Lee were the four terms that expired. And so the new appointments were Rick Partain and Mike Sadesky were back on as chair and vice chair, but we had two new folks come on in place of outgoing Commissioner Cutler. And you know, he was a county commissioner for us for 12 years and he's been a part of our community for a long time. And I'll speak to that in a minute as well, because I think everybody that serves on the board should have recognition of the job and the time and the effort that they took out of their lives to help better Catoosa County and Paul Lee as well there. So we had Michael Gray coming on and Michael's been a part of our community forever. He's a big part of the Ringgold community, but he is a commercial appraiser. So he has expertise up and down the I-75 corridor, especially on all these businesses that come in and what it takes for them to come in based off what he does for a living. So he's got a great understanding of that and that's what we want on the Economic Development Authority. We want to have folks that have ideas about ways to bring new business into Catoosa County. And Jonathan Cannell, here again, you know, he relocated his business, Medstat, and you see it down there on Battlefield Parkway, close to the Walmart. Years ago, back in 2017, because he felt like we were underserved in our community and what he provided and all of his employees decided that they would come with him. So that speaks to, you know, what kind of employer he is. But he's also a member of the Chamber of Commerce, very active in the community. And here again, with a business owner coming in, they've got a different insight, obviously, to what it takes to be a business owner and come into Catoosa County. And so those were the two new board appointments. So we had a lot of fine individuals. I will say you were splitting hairs pretty much down the middle trying to come up with board appointments. There were that many good people applied. And I told every one of them, because one of the things I said is they need an interview, which we did. And then I said, they need the follow up. Those are the tough calls to make when somebody applies and they ended up not being the one you choose. And it wasn't because necessarily they just didn't have credentials or didn't make the cut, but they just weren't the final one. And it's still important that they get a phone call back. So we made sure we contacted every one of them to let them know whether they got it or didn't and thank them for applying. And I think that's important. I think leadership is not just about making the easy calls, it's about making the hard calls too. And it's about doing the right thing. And I felt like through this process, we learned that sitting down and talking to folks is the way to go. It not looking at a piece of paper. There's been things in the past where citizens have said, board appointments are predetermined, board appointments are buddies of buddies or, or different things. And I've heard that out there. But I could tell you, the board appointments that got picked, you know, there was no, these folks weren't even known for the most part, right? We would not have known them. I would never have known Dean Orum or Braden Moreland or Jonathan Cannell or Michael Gray. I had no idea who these folks were, but I got to know them through the interview process. And I think it's important that that happens. So, you know, I think going forward, obviously as a commission, as this new board, we all agree with that. And so that's how we'll take care of these board positions going forward is. So I'm just thankful as a board that we're able to do these things and bring folks in and sit down with them. I think it's important and we've told all of them, hey, look, we want to keep you in our database because there's going to be things that come up down the road that we would like to reach back out to you since you have applied and say, hey, would you be interested in this board? So I think that's another bonus of having people come in and knowing. It's always good to get to know the folks one-on-one. I think that's the only way I can get to know anybody is a one-on-one. I can't get it from a piece of paper for a text message or anything like that. It's important that we sit down and talk to you. And so we had a lot of applicants. I'm thankful for that. I think we came out with some very good board appointments. And I think our goal, and this is definitely my goal, is to make each board we have stronger every time we have board appointments come up. As you've seen, if we've got folks that are doing phenomenal job and they want to continue to serve, we'll definitely, definitely take that into consideration. But if we feel like a board needs a little bit of a change and we've got some great individuals that could come in and do that, then we're, we're ready to step up and make that change as well. And those aren't easy decisions. So I just want to personally thank James Clark and Tony Henson for serving on the Appraiser Board. And I want to thank Paul Lee and Jim Cutler for serving on the Economic Development Authority. You know, thank you for your time. Thank you for your leadership. And you know, as we go forward, that's always the goal is to have fine folks like these folks that just left and great folks come on to take those positions. And you know, when I go to these meetings, I'm looking at the interaction with the folks in the room. What's going on? How are things being handled? And you know, if I feel like that there's an opportunity there to have some new folks, some new sight, some new vision come in and it's going to help move that board forward, then me, I'm, that's what I'm going to advocate for. Because I think it's only as good as its weakest link and I think we can all say that in anything in life. So I want to thank everybody that applied. I want to thank everybody that served. And congratulations to the new members of these boards that are coming on. And that ended the meeting. So two meetings, sorry for the delay. Like I said, you know, I like to do these a little more often, but I think, you know, at the end of the day, I just want to be able to talk to you, the citizens, and kind of go through things. We had a couple of big ones, right? We had the bond initiative and then we've got the board appointments. And so each meeting had one thing that was a little bit bigger that folks were paying attention to. Here again, I encourage you, leave comments below and I'll circle back to them next time. There really wasn't any comments with questions last time, which I take it as a good thing. But I'm sure there'll be a few this time. So leaving those comments and, and down there for questions and things, we'll circle back to them. So thanks for watching. Look forward to talking to you again. Have a great week. Thank you, Catoosa.